What's up?
Hey.
Here you go. It's up. I ended up just having the injection instead of the laser. Still hurts.
I was gonna say, no fun either way.
No. But yeah, if it was the laser, it'd still, I don't know that it'd be over because we'd have at least had the patch on for a while.
Yeah.
You could finger nails into the wooden.
It'd be a tactic. Yes.
Right?
So, on the twenty-sixth, I was having a patch on.
I expect you to arrive.
I'm tired of it.
Three masted ship.
I refer to everybody as matey.
Hey, Matthew?
You can do it.
Is it okay at the end, uh, to just wanna make everybody aware about a, a, uh, business opening this week?
A special announcement?
Special announcement.
Yes, that's okay.
It's, it'll be short.
That's okay, that's okay.
Thanks. This is special though.
Sure.
Thank you.
The rodeo was fantastic, by the way. Everybody loved it.
I wanted to get down there.
That was great.
Very good.
Lot of people.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. It was very cool.
Did Aiden win the largest fish?
No, actually, he probably would've won the smallest fish. It was, it's like this big. I mean, it was, I don't even know how the hook got through its legs.
At least he caught something.
Yeah. Well, yeah, he only caught two fish. Everybody around him on both sides was catching everything and he was, he was getting frustrated. It was, uh, his, his grandpa bought him garlic flavored worms and there were not Italian fish there. Not working.
What?
Little girl.
Italian fish or what about Swedish fish?
There were no branzino in the pond.
No. It did not work well. Like about halfway through, um, Jessica ran and got the regular worms from the city. And then he's, that's when he started catching.
Oh, so we did have big?
Yeah.
I didn't know if we get up there. So I was telling people, no, it's, I think it was safer to say, no, we don't have big.
Yeah, I don't remember it last year.
Yeah, I ate somebody's cat meat. Often they would've been pleasantly surprised.
There's, uh, they were hot dogs.
You could've just cut off a hot dog, yeah?
Yeah.
Breakfast hot dog.
Breakfast. Lions do that, or not lions, eagles?
Uh, I think Brian, that was the one.
Really?
Eagles pay for everything.
Yeah.
On our parks guys. Oh, it's Brian's favorite.
He loves, yeah, he's in his element there.
When my, when my boys were little, that guy down the street was a big eagle that made us die happy. They gave good prizes when they were.
Oh, yeah.
I feel why, I wasn't able to stop. I was blown away by all the prizes.
Yeah.
That's dead feather for, don't need squad.
It's funny, cause Steve, like, doesn't want anything to do with.
Who was that?
The second in charge.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Cause he does not like public speaking or being the guy with the bullhorn or.
He likes the fish, though.
Oh, yeah.
But not with thirty children.
Well, probably isn't right, yeah. That's true.
There were some ducks over there. Geese, that's about right.
Chase them out.
But it looks like they're off this way, like they don't dare.
There haven't been too many, there were too much.
They are on Mr. Blue Boss property.
Okay, okay. They, they put a car with the eradication piece and they know they should be out of the way.
And they blurred where the line is.
But, I mean, it was nice because you could finish without having to track through all the geese.
Yeah. It's great.
It was great.
But I told them to put out a special letter.
How did you know we were gonna be? We picked, we picked a different spot this year.
That's why you thought there was no geese.
So like, how serious are people getting? I mean, it's just kids, it's like, I mean, nobody putting weights in fish or anything like that.
No, no, they're not, they're not.
So, I got this guy, a coworker, well, former coworker. One of my, I mean, just a great, great guy that I knew from work. His big thing is now that he's retired, he goes kayak fishing. And apparently he goes in, like, there's kayak fishing competitions, like specific competitions.
Oh, wow.
So, it's like his, his thing, I think he's got a competition next weekend or something like that.
He store the fish okay?
I don't know. That's a good question. It's a really good question.
Put them underwater?
Maybe.
Yeah.
You throw them there inside the thing, they're flopping around.
Right. By your feet or something? I guess you're real limited on what you can.
I mean, I guess I'm, uh, I've never been a fisherman. I've never really, I mean, when I was a kid, I fished a little bit. I, I didn't realize that there was so much strategy in all places. I always thought it was just a tug of war.
And wait.
We, we throw something in and wait, yeah.
And wait. And wait.
Yep.
A lot of patience involved.
Bio mine cut up.
Beer battered and fried.
Beer battered and fried.
In stick form or whatever we want.
Yeah.
Are these, they already got there about that? Oh, wow.
Notice how he dodged the moving trees.
Smart.
My wife went down to help our, our kid.
So where's the next to our stop sign?
They were moving from.
So, ultimately, what she thinks is outside of flow. But they're not gonna be able to race because there's gonna be cars in front of the brand. It's not gonna get any sooner to school because of the stop sign. It's just that intersection's gonna be difficult.
I hate placing a furniture on a plane.
Oh, jeez.
It's just like, now, I don't like that.
It's going right here.
I'll give you, give me one more minute and then it's done. We'll leave it there.
Where'd they move from?
I have not had a chance to go to Apple Store or Verizon. I mean, that is just the most perplexing thing.
How's it cost a call?
No, Red Day Brad, do they have one of those? You read for, you know, how says cross path does not sound.
Right. Up and down the line.
I just, I've never seen that on a sale.
I see.
You know, what was, what was eight hundred thousand is one seven.
That's what.
Seven to one. You know, and, and I gotta tell you, the quality is. You think you're gonna get great quality.
Yeah.
Turn work.
Do they have, my house or basement is not there. That's all I can.
Yeah.
Unlike, unlike you, it's always just.
Yeah, it's just always, like, literally, you get it, it's like you call a horse over set up and who knows where they live. I wonder if it's something, Dan, we took the Stanley out of, uh, uh, Samsung. Yeah, my daughter was on. But surely, the Verizon service.
Property slopes to the front. To street, now, right, because you're sitting there to Apple Store.
I know, that's right. Down Charlotte's Road. No basements. It makes the same.
That's the same way it is.
It's like your, your. So what do you have to do, to put bags of trash in your car? Then that, that place, doesn't there like stink up the trash just around the other side of the other bag?
Yeah.
Okay, so both were.
In Georgia, they're all. They're in Nori's.
Oh, thank you.
I mean, they're like, yeah. There was one by my brother in the mailbox. She's like, yeah, I'm not gonna get a mail today.
One dumpster in town, or one dumpster for co-mank recycling, one dumpster for paper recycling, and one dumpster for car recycling.
Some of them are dumb or for dumpster. Worst luck. This day, Georgia, Dakota, anybody that knows that's in Carolina.
Right? Little where you can get like, there's some like little infection trap.
Things like this thing.
Oh, the Chinese thing.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And then you hit them with it. Your shoe, they hit like five times.
It's tough to deliver death to them.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, they're the. It's a radical fall. But the Black Widow is like, that's, my brother carries a WD-40 around. It's spraying because it coats him and stuff.
Oh, really?
So that's what he, so that's what he carries when he goes.
That was pretty cool. Yeah, that's. It was the craziest thing, you know, is.
They had the idea of, like, a community covered mailbox. And come up in the corners, that's there. Like, don't worry about it.
Well, I guess Farman is fair.
Just take them, it's, um, flower. Just for leaves. Off the floor and spray it.
He uses the blow for two things. With snow.
He's done, he's done that before, too. It's. He was there, he used that for that, just as a joke.
Oh, the zip code is Montrose, yes.
Well, no, like, you know, my website didn't say it was Montrose. Well, probably. And it's like, I showed up there, I said, oh, no, you gotta drive two miles down the road.
But there's enough people.
Well, that's true. And then there's Congress, just to like, right?
Yeah.
This is all the city apparel on everything. So this is Route eighteen. Where Route eighteen splits, this side is the zip code Montrose.
Where's like, which is where? Oh, that, that's.
So this side is the zip code Montrose and that side is the zip code Fairland.
So on this, so like on that line right there, so that makes sense, that's like, those are car dealerships there? Yeah. Yeah, this is Fairland, this is Montrose, and that's Montrose.
Yeah, cause the area's right here and the Fairland area.
For the, for the man?
Hi, Chuck, how are you?
How's it going?
What about wider round?
No, there's some sort of light method to install them. There's, there's like a procedure that's.
Has a ridiculous name or some guy?
It's called like an ample method or something. I've repeated it like forty times or one of these things. That was our, before it was on council, it was Jessica's key word.
They were the worst, they were the worst people to have in the audience. Just making fun of us.
You say something, you taste a shot.
Basically. Basically. One time, he felt it was me. Cause I was good.
Yes. That was unreal. We, our sides are laughing.
Ah, that was a good one.
Whatever word it was, you move it like this.
Take that.
That was a perfect, fit it in, so seamlessly.
Lots of surveys coming back.
Cause Jessica has keyword and he worked, uh, the off four hundred.
I love it.
You get, you're obviously.
I was talking to Officer Cam.
Much more.
Because he said.
I think it might also be a function of our reach.
You're not allowed to cut a tree down. Something, I'm like.
Ben, you ready?
And I'll call it a order, the committee of the whole, it's June fifth, twenty twenty-three, the time is seven P M. Ben, would you please call the rule?
Number three?
Here.
Number four?
Here.
Number teeny?
Here.
Number volt?
Here.
Number McLeeser?
Here.
Number wire?
Here.
Number wiring?
Here.
Seven.
Okay, let's start out with, uh, finance and property, Stephanie.
Okay. Gina, do you want to handle this one? It's really just pretty basic.
Yeah, this is, C I C owns this property, and this is the coroner, um, Williman, where the, where the, the roundabout will be. And so the C I C's gonna transfer the property to the city.
Okay. Pretty basic, any questions? Are we excited about a roundabout? So, Dave, I'm with you.
The body shops are.
Yes, I know, but they have the least chance of accidents, do you know that? Yeah, crazy. Okay, any, any issues? All right.
I wanna put it on record that my mom is terrified of roundabouts, so.
I understand, yes. Or you're mad at the people that don't understand roundabouts.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, we'll put that on the agenda. And then the second one is where.
We need a motion.
Okay, we need a motion, sorry.
The motion is to be placed on the agenda.
Sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries?
Okay, and then three B? Sorry to swallow. Um, just moving, uh, some expenses for the fiscal year, Gina, anything regarding?
Um, is this for two new radios, one for the fire department and one to replace one in the police department?
How long did those typically last, chief?
Uh, the one that we're replacing was from when Chief Grimes and Chief Bacon originally put Mark's radio systems.
Wow.
City, so, well over, probably, plus twelve years.
So just updating, there's new?
We knew we were gonna have to down the road replace these radios because they were getting gated, they were outside of the manufacturers keeping repair parts for them. This one finally went, we tried to fix it a couple of different ways and we just, we can't transmit on it.
Okay.
What do you want to have that age?
One that's a couple of years younger than that one.
Okay. Something we should consider for budgeting going forward then?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion? Oh, do you have a question?
Yeah. More of a comment than a question. You know, we all read in our excellent newsletter, uh, delivered to our residents, the importance of economic development. And I just wanna point out on this little eighteen thousand dollar purchase, that's the equivalent of twenty-nine jobs at forty thousand dollars a year. That's what it takes to make the place run. And that's why every job that we have in the community, large or small, is important. Twenty-nine jobs gets us eighteen thousand dollars worth of radio income.
It's a great way of describing it.
Mm-hmm.
It's a great way of describing. Okay, that was my comment, no question. You need a motion, which I will make.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, moving on to four A. Uh, this is repealing and replacing chapter nine oh seven. Um, Ben, I will let you give the overview on that.
Um, so, uh, I was approached by, uh, two sewer contractors. Um, they came to the window and wanted to speak to council's office, uh, to file a complaint. Not totally uncommon, but what was very refreshing was that they also brought a solution with them. Um, so currently, for road opening permits, street excavations, of which sewer contractors are our main users, uh, the only option is to give a cash bond. Um, so in this example, one of the gentlemen I was talking to works for Rotarooter. If he had three jobs in the city, all with five thousand dollar cash bonds, that's fifteen thousand dollars of capital he had to have tied up. Just to do three jobs in cash. Um, so he asked that we change the ordinance to allow for commercial bonds. Um, so I ran the traps, talking to all the departments, and pretty much the general sentiment was, yes, why don't we do this? That would be a lot easier, cause then I don't have to do a refund, I just have to sign the line at the bottom of the bond that says release.
Great.
Um, so here we are, we're bringing to you a suggestion to amend our ordinance that would allow either a cash bond or a commercial bond, whatever your preference may be.
And that's, and that's what we do for other situations when they're building. And we don't make builders put down X amount of money.
Correct.
And we release it, so it's very similar to what we've been doing.
Next three items are sidewalk bonds for a developer, that we didn't make them put up cash, we made them put up a bond.
Yeah. Are there any other things we can do?
If I can, it's important to note what Ben mentioned, the Rotarooter, that's, that was a franchisee. So when you're a smaller franchisee, that's a lot of capital to tie up. Large developers have that.
Well, that's just assuming that they have two or three in the north, City of North Canton. What about other cities and other, you know, other areas, I mean, that could be a significant amount of money.
So they did bring that solution, that's great.
So, Ben, are there any other services like that, where we are making them do cash, that this could be another option for?
I was not able to find any others where cash was the only option.
Okay.
This appeared to be the last one that was cash.
Okay.
Any comments, questions?
One other thing, you said. If you're a resident and you're soliciting quotes, this would probably make it more competitive. Because again, that small business person can compete in this space, uh, for that opportunity. It has only, only the larger companies that have cash. They would, obviously, then control the marketplace or influence the marketplace.
And that's a really good point, I mean, the thing that stuck out to me as I was reading through this is, um, you know, this line right here in the cover page. Um, found that switching to a commercial bond would not only save the city time and cost, but it prevent contractors from being able to tie up, uh, this capital. I mean, so then it's like a win for the city, we're saving time, we're saving money, but it's also saving, you know, the, the money being tied up from the, the contractors. And I think we've all heard the comments from people from time to time that North Canton is not friendly toward contractors. Man, this is just one step in the right direction, or one of many steps in the right direction, I should say.
So the second change, which was also proposed by the contractor I talked to, is, under our current ordinance, the bond amount is set by Rob based on what they're proposing to do. So this means that bonds could be very different based on what house you're doing where. Uh, the example, the gentleman from Rotaroot gave me was he did one house for, had a thousand dollar bond. Three houses down the street had a five thousand dollar bond because there's a manhole right in front of that. Uh, that made it difficult to know how much the permit was going to be when pricing for customers. Cause they had to say, I don't know, I gotta go into the permits office first. So we've, the proposal also standardizes bond amounts to just flat, ten thousand for a minor job, twenty-five thousand for a major.
And you've defined major and minor how?
Um, the engineer would still choose major, minor, based on how close you are to a manhole or a waterline or, basically, how much damage could you cause if you did something wrong? And then there is a caveat in there that for truly huge projects, so for example, Dominion coming through and ripping up a whole neighborhood, um, we will set. We will set the bond amount at that time at some higher amount than twenty-five thousand, because that is such a large project. Or if you were going to tap into a concrete water main, uh, that's a lot, a lot more dangerous to tap into a twelve inch concrete water main than a four inch iron water main.
Anything else, any other comments, questions? I'll make a motion that we put this on the agenda.
What we'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, so moving on to four B, C, and D, let's group these together and then we'll vote on them individually. They're all, and they're all for, Ben, I'll let you take this, they're all for entering in amended and restated sidewalk bonds.
Yeah, so this is exactly what we just did for phase three. Um, the developers essentially released their bond for phase three and they're like, oh, wait a minute, we got four other phases that you're also holding lots on that we'd like to sell. So, uh, all three of these bonds will be converted from lots to commercial bonds. And they have requested an emergency because the lots for phase one and two are already under contract. So they would like them released as soon as possible in order to sell.
Okay, pretty basic, any comments, questions? I'm gonna make a motion that we move item four B to the council agenda.
With an emergency clause?
With an emergency clause.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, then I'm gonna make a motion to move four C to the agenda with an emergency clause.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then finally, I'm gonna make a motion to move four D to the council agenda with an emergency clause.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now moving on to four E, this is kind of exciting, actually. Um, so this deals with, uh, turning on red, no turn on red. Um, I'm gonna bring to everybody's attention, um, on page forty. It shows the highlighted changes in the chart, color coded, very easy to read.
Have you ever put it up on the screen? Thank you.
So, as you can see, there's gonna be, um, three different kinds here. Ben, I'll let you take this, um, but I am very excited to know that, or to learn that we're addressing this, cause this needed to be addressed for a long time.
Um, so this started with, um, Patrick had initially asked me to write, draft an ordinance to repeal the no turn on red at Charlotte and Main, because we're putting in the right turn lanes and that would sort of defeat the purpose of the right turn lanes and you couldn't turn right on red. But then that, in hunting down the ordinance that established that prohibition, um, turned into a conversation of, well, how many of these exist in the city? And then turned into a wider conversation with Rob of how many of them are still needed. So, the ordinance for tonight proposes to keep three of the prohibitions of no turn on red, so the three in green.
And they don't have a turn lane?
None of these have a dedicated turn lane. Well, Clearmont will have a dedicated, but only in one direction of the T area.
Okay.
Um, so Main and Maple, the town square, will be, still be prohibited right turns at all times. Maple and Clearmont will be prohibited right turns during school hours on weekdays, that's what the eight AM to four PM means. And Hillcrest and Maple will be prohibited right turns during school hours on weekdays. All of the rest will be repealed.
Excellent. Any comments, questions?
So Ben, why do you think, if the ones were previously repealed, so we had looked at those, we just hadn't looked at them as a grouping before? Or is this just, we just had to dig a little bit deeper and thus the changes?
Um, in twenty eighteen, they, um. So the progression of this is that ordinance three thousand five hundred forty-four was. So the progression of this is that ordinance three thousand five hundred forty-four was passed. The next one amends that one, and then twenty eighteen amends that one, and now this one amends that pre, so they've sort of, it's sort of been a changing list as the years have gone by, based on traffic flows and signalization, and where schools are located was a large part of it.
Okay. I love the color coding.
Um, I'm guessing Hillcrest and Maple is keeping the no turn on red because of the middle school? Like, the children walking from the middle schools?
Because there will be Charlotte now.
Oh, there will also be an elementary.
Um, and that's still really in that area of the best place to cross north-south Maple in that neighborhood.
So, Main and Seventh, though, also has a lot of students crossing, correct?
Correct, but that intersection has pushed across buttons. Hillcrest and Maple only has one pushed across button in one direction, not in both directions.
Okay.
We do have a crossing guard at Hillcrest and Maple.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Gina.
Okay, so the push to cross button, that's what there is at Maple and Main as well, right, like?
Maple, Main, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so we're keeping it there, I assume, because, shouldn't be taking all of these assumptions, but it makes sense to me, because as a frequent walker, when the light is red, I can safely cross if it says cross. However, if it's Seventh and Main, where we have the push to cross, you can't. You can't have the little walking man telling you you can cross, but if someone's turning right on red, you can't, correct?
Well, if.
You have to be careful.
If you're a pedestrian and you have the walking man, you have right of way over whoever's turning right on red.
But, but the walking man, but the right.
It's an industry term.
It is an interesting, it is, it is, um, okay.
Uh, Main is being kept for two reasons.
Mm-hmm.
On the west side, you still have buildings very close to the intersection that make it difficult to see, and then also that intent of a pedestrian-centric town square.
Okay.
I have, I have a question. I'm looking at the Main and Everhard intersection, southbound, we have signal arrows that allow you to go right on red.
Yeah.
What you're going to do, however, is that signal arrow is not lit, you can go right on red, correct?
If the signal arrow is red, and there is nobody turning left, you may turn right.
I would suggest that you revisit that, because traffic moves at a fairly good clip, south to north. And there's a lot of activity at that intersection, and I think it may be very easy for motorists to miss the cue and make the turn and pull into traffic that has a green arrow to make a left. This is the Main and Everhard intersection, I would, uh.
I'm agreeing with you, Daryl, because you've really got to pull far from, if you're heading south on Main Street.
Yeah.
You've really got to pull far forward to make a right-hand turn onto Everhard, and those that are heading north on Main Street only have that one lane to pull into, and that's the lane that those making a right-hand turn would be in.
You've got to.
Yeah.
You can see here. You gotta pull way forward beyond the stop line in order to make that turn.
And I think if you think about that intersection, that's unique compared to the other ones on the list.
It definitely is, yeah.
For the sake of expediency, uh, if you're looking for a motion, I would, uh, make a motion that we set aside the Main and Everhard intersection, adopt the other changes as recommended, and then we can revisit that if we, if we want to. Uh, and we can, uh, I don't know, we'll just let it stew a little bit, I guess, we're, we're not gonna do this on emergency, are we?
No.
No.
So we can, we can come back to it, reamend the ordinance if we want to, but let's think about it.
Yes, we were, this is.
Okay, well, then, then we'll just come back and, and revisit again, maybe we could all drive it, I'll pay a little more attention when I go through it to see, but I, I pretty, I make a lot of right turns on, on Everhard Road. So I go home after I've been to the library.
So you would like Main and Everhard kept?
Excuse me?
You would like the prohibition.
Kept.
Kept.
For now.
Mm-hmm.
So what I'm recommending is that we, we, we advance this, my recommendation is, is that we advance this to the next council meeting, my, my motion is to be advanced with Main and Everhard kept, deleted from the ordinance.
Let's second that motion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so two things before we adjourn, one is the mayor wanted to make some comments?
Yes, thank you, but that's right, just a couple of things to make sure you're aware of, uh, the North Canton Fire Department, they're gonna conduct the hy, hydrant flow, uh, test up at the Mount Pleasant Frank Avenue, uh, by the airport on Wednesday, June the seventh, at approximately five A M. So, again, nearby city water customers should check their water for discoloration or for laundry, but this one's a little closer to home, uh, also on Wednesday, uh, hydrant flow will be conducted by the fire department. It's gonna be up by Dogwood Pool Wednesday, and that's June seventh, and that's also in the morning from about five forty-five to seven. And again, any nearby water customers should check their water for discoloration before laundry, so I just wanna make sure you're aware of that in your areas. And, uh, there is going to be a, a ribbon cutting for the Goodwill Bookstore and Donation Center. Uh, they've located, uh, out at the twenty twenty-two oh seven, uh, Easton, or East Maple Street, it's in the, uh, where the post office is, it's in that little complex there, and they're doing their ribbon cutting on Wednesday at five o'clock, so just wanted to make council aware of that. And that's my announcement, thank you.
Thank you. We are going to, um, let's just add it, there, there's a great chance that we're going to have to have a committee meeting before break, so let's tentatively add a committee of the whole meeting for June twenty-sixth, and we'll double up with the regular committee meeting there. So if you look at the.
The regular council meeting?
Yeah, regular, yeah, regular council meeting, so we'll have a, a regular council meeting on the twelfth. Then we will have Juneteenth, so we won't have a meeting there, and then we'll come back on the twenty-sixth, and we'll have both meetings, uh, committee of the whole and a regular council meeting on the twenty-sixth, so, is that okay for everybody?
Sounds good.
You have that public hearing also on the twenty-sixth.
Yes, true, yes, thank you.
That's at six forty-five?
Yes.
There are three items on that.
Three items on the public hearing, okay. So, the public hearing, committee of the whole, and then the regular council meeting. Okay, um, entertain, motion to adjourn?
The vote moves?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn.
Mr. Hall? I would like to back you up, I would like to back you up on that Everhard light.
You have some personal experience down there, yeah.
Something that needs to be looked at is, you should only be allowed, if you're going northbound, and you want to turn left on Everhard, you should only be able to turn on a green arrow. Cause someone took a chance on the red arrow and turned left in front of you, up, again, killed. And I guess it should say, see, the light had changed. The people who were going north had a green.
Exactly what you're talking about.
And that guy was sitting there in the left lane, and he had a red. He was afraid that the people going north were gonna turn red, which meant he had to sit through the whole damn cycle again, and he didn't wanna do that. So before the Northbound really turned red, he made a dash across it. There should only be a protected left turn for that person.
Left only on green.
Yes.
But there's two lanes, two lanes that are going left.
No, there's only one lane from the left, there's two lanes going north.
Going.
There's two lanes going north.
Yes, okay, yes.
And what all he's saying is, Chuck's saying is that, on that left turn, northbound.
Yes.
Only make a left turn with a green arrow.
Okay.
Right now, you can make a left turn. If the light's green.
For the people going north.
Yeah.
It's not easily understood, I don't know.
So if you've got somebody that's.
I wasn't.
Chuck, is that where your accident was?
I've been near the shit.
Yeah, you do.
They will cut that corner.
Yes. Yeah.
And there's a lot of work, there's not a lot of space, so only a left turn on Main and Hard, if you have a green arrow.
You wanna see they move the street, you, Chuck, run the red light?
Yeah, let's see it.
Only the right there.
He literally runs the red light in the street.
Who does? Oh, the street.
Just here, the light's red?
Okay.
Wow.
So, case in point.
Yeah.
Got it.
Maybe, maybe the laws don't apply to.
So that usually, I'll tell you one other thing. Star Ground Engineers had major recommendations for that intersection, and they have fantastic engineer beneath it, blew it all off. That intersection is so filed on.
So what did, what did, uh, the engineers do? The beneath it's.
They wanted actually another lane coming down Arrow, you have to turn right and go south.
Everhard, you mean, not Arrowhead, Everhard.
So another lane to go south.
Coming down the.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, so they had a double turn lane.
A double.
See, you'd have a double turn left, double.
You would have a dedicated right turn, and then you would have two lanes to go north, the middle one is if you want to stay in the outside lane so you can continue down your, your road fifty feet, and that's all screwed up as well.
Oh, everybody goes.
The cops able to go straight there?
Yeah, it's a mess.
It goes straight.
Through the barrier, I remember that.
No, John, no.
No.
No, I don't want to know.
This is a bridge, right here.
There's this guy, I told, I've shown you the, the roundabout.
Well, this should have been wide. This business is just taking your chance, and you think it's clear, it's correct.
Yellow and green are in effect today, and a green are what we were gonna keep in the council.
This is all screwed up.
They go outside the line.
Yeah.
It's not just here, it's wherever they have. I got, I got guys that are in the, in the left, the front, right, left turn, hell, they're bouncing over the other lane.
Yeah.
And this way, we're wide here, it's extending all the way down, so if they have a turn here, you just straight, and that's.
And no, and no faults, you know, like.
And they free, what they're riding, it's new, it's clean.
That's amazing, yeah.
I guess I don't know that intersection. I'm gonna go drive through, I'm gonna follow you, thank you for hanging out. Driving to the target.